I really appreciate all the help that you've given us. I'd like to call to order the Monday, April 6th, 2020 City Council meeting. This is a special meeting. I miss sitting next to my colleagues, but these are unprecedented times and I'm very glad for the opportunity to conduct the necessary business of the city. And I really want to thank our city manager, our staff and our council for coming together tonight to have this meeting and actually for all the hard work that everybody has been doing for the last few weeks and will continue to do for the next few weeks. I want to want you to know how proud I am of our city. Let's start with roll call. City Clerk, could you do that for us, please? Right here.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Robertson.
Present.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers On.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two proclamations tonight. The first one is a standing together proclamation that I would invite each of our council members to help read as we stand together in support of all the residents of our city. Let's start with Councilmember Barksdale and then I'll just let each person chime in at their when they're supposed to.
Whereas the city of Bellevue recognizes that as a community, we are all looking for ways to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic to slow the spread of the virus and to minimize loss of life and other impacts.
Whereas donations and support in response to the most urgent needs in the community have come from all residents, including a significant commitment from our Chinese community.
And whereas there has been a regional, national and worldwide trend of increased discrimination, particularly against Asian American communities since the COVID-19 virus was discovered and...
Councilmember Robertson.
I'm not seeing my agenda package at all.
I'm not either.
I will read for you.
Thank you.
Whereas these reprehensible displays of hate impair the ability of our responders and other city services to provide needed attention to the COVID-19 response. And Councilmember Stokes.
I can't read it either. It's just sitting.
That's okay. Whereas viruses...
I can read it.
...viruses do not recognize race, nationality or ethnicity and have the ability to infect people from all backgrounds. Having Chinese ancestry or any other ancestry does not make a person more vulnerable to this illness or more likely to be a source of the virus. And...
Whereas hate and bias are not acceptable in our community, the City Council remains committed to our vision of welcoming the world and recognizing our diversity as a key strength for the city and our character. And...
Councilmembers On, why don't you finish reading this?
Whereas each of us has a personal responsibility to prevent the spread of misinformation, support all fellow community members and reject stigma, hate and bias in all forms. And whereas in these times of social distancing, residents have the ability to report incidents of bias and hate online from the safety of their home or residence.
Now therefore, I, Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the city of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its City Council, do proclaim our renewed and ongoing support of embracing diversity and ensuring a welcoming environment for everyone in our community. Bellevue strongly stands against hate, bias or violence based on race, nationality, gender, disability or religion, and I urge all residents to come together and support their neighbors during this unprecedented time. As a community responding to the challenges brought by COVID-19, we are stronger together. Thank you, everybody. Okay, this next proclamation underscores our tremendous appreciation of Overlake Hospital, their medical and support staff for the care they are giving to our community every day, but especially during this COVID crisis. And I ask Deputy Mayor Noonhouse to read the commending Overlake Hospital proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the COVID-19 crisis has placed an unprecedented burden on hospital doctors, nurses and support staff. And whereas Overlake Medical Center has served the community since 1960 and today is the only Level III trauma center in Bellevue. And whereas the staff at Overlake have been on the front lines in Bellevue for treating patients who are critically ill with the coronavirus. And whereas the 2,700 staff members at Overlake, including doctors and nurses, are working 24/7 under extremely stressful conditions. And whereas approximately 100 physicians have been focused on COVID-19 with a heavy emphasis on emergency, critical and urgent care. And whereas all of them are putting their own health at risk in order and to treat coronavirus patients and save lives. And whereas since late February, Overlake has performed thousands of COVID-19 tests and had hundreds of positive results. And whereas Overlake's census of 50 to 60 COVID-19 patients on any given day is one of the highest counts in Washington State. And whereas nine to 12 of those patients are in the critical care unit with most of them on ventilators. And whereas Overlake's command center team has worked tirelessly to make sure the hospital has adequate supplies. Now therefore, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the city of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its City Council, to hereby proclaim on April 6th, 2020, our appreciation and support of Overlake Medical Center staff and call upon all residents and businesses of this great city to join me in recognizing the heroic and selfless contributions of Overlake workers in the battle against COVID-19 and encourage community members to donate equipment and support the hospital's efforts where possible.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And I want to thank all the restaurants and all the people who have worked with the restaurants to supply food for our hospital workers. They continue to do that and it's very much appreciated. Okay, I'd like to have approval of the agenda.
So moved?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, now we have a report of the city manager.
So thank you, Mayor Robinson and council members. I'd first like to welcome the viewing public to Bellevue's first virtual council meeting and like to ask for your patience as we implement this new technology for tonight's meeting. And what technology? There may be some glitches along the way, so just bear with us on those. Special thanks to Charmaine Aradondo, our Assistant Director, City Clerk, as well as Jeff Chandler from our Information Technology Department and our fabulous BTV team for putting in many hours to make this virtual council meeting a reality. So we recognize limitations in participating remotely and have adapted our presentation to have timely breaks for council-wide feedback along the way, as well as to ask questions about our COVID update. I also want to express my thanks to the council members for your support and commitment to our community in this very challenging time. I, as well as many others, know that you have looked out for the best interests of the community. You have each personally checked in on people and then made connections with residences and businesses that have really helped the city's mission to protect, as well as you've been very supportive of the staff. You know, these are indeed very challenging times. We are not doing business as usual, but we are continuing to provide critical services to our residents and businesses. And nearly all the services are being provided remotely with many employees working from home. We also continue to provide outreach and respond to calls for service with our first responders working on the front lines of this battle to slow the spread of this coronavirus. The good news is that we've seen the vast number of our residents following the guidelines for social distancing and staying home to improve the chances of staying well. This voluntary compliance is helping serve greater good so that we emerge from the pandemic as whole as possible and encourage everyone to stay at home as social distancing appears to be our best defense against the COVID-19 virus. So it goes really without saying that this virus is challenging the whole world and we need to do our part to keep each member of our community safe and out of harm's way. We do not know when the crisis will end. The degree which we follow the guidelines from the CDC and the Governor's Office and the King County Public Health Department will determine our fate when the current crisis abates. And having said that, the fact is that none of us in our lifetimes has experienced such a sober and extensive crisis beyond the preparation and resources at any level of government. So tonight, we'll provide an overview with the council of the many ways that the city of Bellevue is responding to this COVID-19 emergency. Specifically, this evening, we're going to cover ways that we are connecting with the community, how the city of Bellevue has adapted city services to remain effective while protecting our employees and how we are preparing for what is coming soon. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy City Manager Kate Behrs to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Miyake, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, members of the council. Charmaine, I think we can go ahead to slide number four. So in this section of the presentation, we will be reviewing several ways that the city has been connecting across the community and what that has meant for us in terms of adapting our city services to meet those needs. As you know, and as one of the proclamations tonight focused on, at the front line of this are those who are medical professionals and those who support medical professionals. Our paramedics, police officers and emergency medical technicians have been providing their critical services to the community when it matters most. Supporting that team is a network of city staff and community agencies that respond to the secondary effects of COVID-19. Our response to the community needs is in part shaped by the information we're learning from those frontline responders. In addition, our staff have been actively connecting with other longstanding community networks in order to inform our response. Those networks are the neighborhood liaison groups, our regular customers and volunteer network out of Mini City Hall, the Interfaith Network that we partner with in many occasions, police advisory councils and other longstanding groups that serve the city of Bellevue. People from these groups are thankful, first of all, for all of the communication coming from the city, phone calls, email blasts, social media, our website and printed media. They're also telling us that neighbors are out there checking on their neighbors and helping each other. We're also hearing about a widespread desire to help, including support for medical employees and first responders and a desire to contribute or volunteer. Many faith groups and other networks are stepping up activities to support the vulnerable in our community. These communications and the information we've received have informed ways we've adapted our services, such as streamlining the list of community resources for callers and web searchers, educating customer service staff across departments on the options for donating and volunteering, enlisting our conflict resolution team and initiating regular phone calls with these community networks to get the latest information and understand where there may be gaps and needs. Moving on to the next slide. We remain in active communication as well with human services providers. What we hear most often from those providers is that money is the most critical need. Clients are asking for the most help in the form of rent and utility payment assistance. Under an emergency order, which is on the council's agenda later this evening for ratification, the city has authorized spending an additional $450,000 from council contingency to meet those most critical community needs. The funds have gone to five organizations with whom we already had contracts for human services and will be targeted for emergency, rent, utility and other funding assistance. These funds supplement funding that was originally awarded through the Human Services Commission process and will be exploring ways to replenish the council contingency as time goes on. The five providers who received this additional funding are Catholic Community Services, Hope Link, LifeWire, Salvation Army and Solid Ground. And you can see contact information for those organizations as well as others in the community that provide similar rent and utility emergency assistance on your screen right now should anybody need to reach out. We're also hearing across the board from a number of other human services providers that those looking to support others in our community can make donations at their websites as well. We encourage anyone watching who has the means to reach out to local charities that they support and offer what help they can. Next slide. Food, emergency food is the second most requested thing that we are hearing from our human services providers. Food banks are receiving fewer donations than normal and food vouchers are declining. The city of Bellevue does have local partners under contract that provide emergency food and food assistance and the numbers again are on the screen for anyone that might need that assistance. In addition, the Bellevue School District with other partners has been providing significant support to Bellevue families that need assistance during this time, particularly with food. They remain a significant asset to the community in ensuring that kids and families do not fall through the cracks during this uncertain time. In addition to providing additional financial support to our nonprofit service providers, in our own services, we are taking steps to help our residents in financial distress. Water and sewer service will not be shut off for non-payment and no late fees will be assessed during the COVID-19 crisis. We also are able to work with our utility customers to arrange payment plans and in some circumstances waive bills. Our emergency assistance program waives up to four months of basic water, sewer and stormwater service charges for certain residents experiencing temporary financial crises. And another option may be a reduced bill under the city's utility rate relief programs. Those programs are offered to low-income seniors and disabled residents and can offer up to a 70% discount on the utility bill. Next slide. Moving on to another area of need, businesses are also making significant adjustments on our impacted by this crisis. The city is leading a weekly call with local chambers of commerce, tourism, bureaus, downtown associations and the cities of Kirkland, Redmond, Issaquon, Renton. Staff of all of these agencies are able to evaluate the needs of our regional businesses holistically and we work together to address the need across all of the agency's expertise to make sure people are getting the assistance they need. What we're hearing mostly from local businesses at this time are that small businesses and sole proprietors are the most heavily impacted. Many are aware of small business loans but are concerned about the risk of repayment in the future or the risk that those loans will not be waived. So they're looking more for direct grants and other direct support to help them pay rent, make payroll and cover healthcare costs. For sole proprietors and our smallest businesses, of course, loss of business income often means immediate loss of personal income. In coordination with our business partners, our collective strategy is to connect the right resource with the need. To that end, the city of Bellevue stood up a temporary call center and has been making direct outbound calls to businesses around the community. We've been reallocating staff from other city departments and that allows us to complete approximately 80 calls a day. We also have focused efforts on smaller locally owned businesses like restaurants, retail, neighborhood services, which are more impacted than our larger tech companies. We also receive inbound requests via our website and other sources. We're fielding an average of 50 to 60 contacts a week in that manner. Case by case, we're referring businesses to relevant resources. We refer some to human services providers for rent support and other kinds of income replacement and emergency assistance. And we facilitate applications to state and federal assistance programs, tax deferrals, loans and grants. We are also procuring in partnership with Startup 425 additional technical assistance to help businesses with applications from the Small Business Administration. All the resources that staff shares over the phone are also posted on the city's website by a link from the opening page and is continually enhanced as we learn of new information from all partners and relief programs. It's important to remember that essential city services are continuing even with the extra demand caused by COVID-19. In addition to all public safety, consistent with the governor's order, the city still is maintaining its critical infrastructure and is able to provide many normal customer services because of our ability to telework. The city is providing remotely whatever services we can, where we can do so virtually and limit risk to employees and the public accessing those services. Next slide. At this moment, we want to pause the presentation and handle any questions you have specifically with respect to the topics we presented so far. So with that, I will turn the meeting back to Mayor Robinson. Okay, thank you very much. That was a wonderful presentation. I'm going to go ahead and call on each council member to see if they have any comment or questions. I'm going to call in this order, Councilmember Lee, then Stokes, Robertson's on, Barksdale, Noonhouse and then lastly me. So we'll start with Councilmember Lee.
All right, Lee. And I really appreciate the staff responding to first and foremost our human needs, you know, due to this very extraordinary virus, you know, that's having such an impact and obviously unpredicted and expected that we are looking at. So I think you start out at the right foot. The one question I have is that, two questions actually. One is when we, you know, reach out to small businesses and especially small businesses, restaurants you mentioned, and the people that traditionally are not connected to government services and they struggle on their own and they do everything based on, you know, their ability to work hard and do all that stuff. And so when you set up your network with, you know, that you want to help out, reach out, my question is, it sounds good, we need to do all those, but I always say devil is in the detail. People that are, you know, startups, poppin' malls, stores, they don't know, they don't understand. They listen, they hear that federal government is providing $2 trillion and how many hundred billion dollars and you're going to help businesses. You know, the big companies and other people who know how to do this, they know how to do it, you know? They work through chambers and EDAs and governments. However, those thousands of them, you know, the small businesses that we, Bellevue is proud to have, they don't know how to access, especially immigrant populations, people who have different languages, you know? They are small, they're so busy working from day to day, hour to hour, they have no clue. You know, so I, you know, I think that's always the challenge that we all face is how do we reach to the people who are difficult to reach? How to reach people who have not been engaged previously? How do we reach people who have no relationship built? This is the detail. I really like to see how we can do.
Right.
They don't need very much, but they need, you know, a few dollars to just carry them over to the next day, next month, that, you know, they support their family and employees and how they're going to remain business. They cannot stay, say for a while, we can wait for next month, you know? It's from day to day. So I would like to see having more specific detail to look at how do we help those businesses, especially very small businesses that will not be able to and cannot and don't know how to access the resources we're talking about. That's first question. The second question, since I haven't seen what the other presentation might be in the presentation that the city staffs have given us, I'm just going to ask for that, just at the risk of maybe repeating, you know, or maybe you're going to answer it later. We're addressing the first and foremost important thing, absolutely necessary. As we were working with the agencies and so on, we specifically human services, okay? People are going to be affected right away. What I'm looking at is do we have any long-term planning to look at the long-term economic downturn? You know, this crisis hitting us, the economic downturn is going to be significant. We don't know when it's going to come back. We don't know how many businesses are going to survive and rebound. Even if they do, it's going to take time to do. You know, we've seen businesses going to be down 20, 30, 40%. We hear that in Bellevue Collection, it's going to lose hundreds of million dollars, not just in business, maybe even in tax revenue alone. So how do we make up all these revenues that we are expecting to get? Because that's how we plan our long-term infrastructure, long-term investment, long-term spending. And those are the things that we need to make sure we have adequate revenue to handle them. So I would like to see that we start looking into it, looking at what the implication is and how can we look at the data, you know? If we continue on this trend, what do we have to do to come up with the revenue to handle the things necessary? Everyday expenses to keep our public safe, police, fire, roads, utility, services. Because, you know, the economic impact is going to be tremendous on revenue. I would like to take a look at that. Finally, you know, I appreciate the $450,000 that we are, you are asking the council, well, you have already proposed to spend on human services. I would like to ask, where do we, I know that Kate mentioned, we're going to figure out how to, you know, explore ways to make up for this $450,000. But I just wanted to know, where are we coming up with $450,000? And I believe that if I anticipate the answer, that we are in good shape to come up with the $450,000 because we have a council contingency. So it's not going to impact any other services or any other, you know, important priorities that we have. So I think I want to compliment our city staff, our city council, our city, that we have these kinds of contingencies. So that's why in emergencies like this, we can respond quickly and we can help our people in need. So I just want to show the public that, you know, we're not just going to borrow from Peter Paypour, but we are indeed having the ability to take off emergencies such as what we're looking at. So thank you very much for the time you gave me.
So Councilmember Lee, just to briefly go over your questions and then if you need more information, I'm happy to follow up in a different format. But you did ask in particular, how are we reaching small businesses, particularly those that are maybe not as traditionally connected to the Chamber and some of the other places that one would normally go for help? This is a concern that we have both for businesses and for residents. Obviously, the financial impacts of the COVID crisis are going to impact people who don't traditionally have to tap into different support networks. And how do we educate folks that number one, those resources exist? And how to then navigate the systems that exist to distribute those funds is really part of what we are partnering with folks like the Chamber, like the other, like our other networks to help us, number one, identify those businesses. So the proactive phone calling we're doing, we're gathering those contacts from our business license applications and other things. So we're proactively reaching out to small businesses who may not otherwise be connected. The Chamber is, for example, building up a stable of folks who are willing to volunteer their time and expertise to help small businesses be better positioned to deal with the Small Business Administration, to deal with the lenders that are able to tap into the small business loans, help them with the kinds of documentations they need, those sorts of things, help them get their paperwork together and understand what the resources are and how they can best position themselves to get those resources. So that is a part of what we are very much focused on, is helping people navigate the system and understand what's available to them and proactively reach out. To your second question about working with the long-term implications of this crisis, we are very much looking at that and will be engaging the council in different meetings to help understand what we are forecasting. Obviously, this is a conversation that's happening with economists and others all around the country right now. And we are doing our best to understand what a range of potential outcomes might look like, what the time to come out of this particular response and what that means in terms of revenues in the future are, things that we're looking at very carefully with many other jurisdictions in the region and with our other partners who are likewise thinking about how to best assist businesses and residents when we are able to kind of come out of the stay-home orders and quote unquote "back to normal." What does that look like and what kind of assistance can we provide? So there's both forecasting for the city's own... So there's both forecasting for the city's own budget, which we'll engage you more on. There's also in the, particularly in the small business and in the partnerships we've developed with the other cities and with the Chamber, already focus on ways to get the word out when businesses are able to be back up and running normally, ways to get the word out that businesses are open and encouraging people to come and take advantage of those resources in order to try to drive business back, back into this region and help support those businesses as much as we, as we can. But that will certainly, the long-term implications and planning will certainly be a continuing topic of conversation with the council. And then to your third question, the $450,000 that is also on for ratification this evening is coming from the council contingency. That was an amount of money already identified in the general fund for 2020 that was not spoken for, was not dedicated to any other project or program. So it, as you indicated, it does, being able to shore up the human services funds for these critical near-term needs does not come at the cost of another priority that you had identified.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes. Do you have a question or a comment? And if we don't get to you right this moment, I will count, I will call on Councilmember Robertson and come back to you. So Councilmember Robertson? Councilmember Stokes, are you there?
Yeah, I, I was waiting for you to quit talking, so I didn't want to interrupt you. I started to say something. Don't, don't jump too fast. I was going to say next slide. I think that Councilmember Lee asked some very, very good questions. There's a lot of material in these next up to 20 pages that covers a lot of this. So it's, I'm glad to hear we're bringing these out. I did want to have a couple of comments on this. One, I think she acknowledged the fact and briefly talked about that there are organizations, including Congress of the Homeless and others, individuals who are out there working in conjunction with the city and on their own initiative to provide help. And that's, that's great. I mean, I think the community itself has really jumped out and worked together. And I see a lot of very positive things on Nextdoor in terms of people helping. I think there's just a good, we have helped generate, I think, really good approach to this. And everybody's, you know, scares the hell out of you what's going to happen. But I think the community is really, as has already been indicated, working together. We want to increase and encourage that. The other is on some specifics we'll get to, and I know there's a lot of material that probably any of these questions have been answered already in a way. I am have a little concern about some of the organizations past, in addition to the five that we're specifically focusing on in human services, who also have needs and would like to see some approach developed to work with them as well. And make sure that, you know, they're, they're included in this whole piece. The other thing that I think is important is to talk about, and we've already started, and again, there's a lot of material already out there. And I think the city's approach on this has just been top-notch. And I know you're, you're doing a lot of discussions with other cities and this is all very helpful. But what I'm interested in too is looking at where we are now and where we're going in the next few weeks. And, you know, who really knows what's going to come out, whether it's going to get worse or get better. We're hoping for the better. But also, I know we're in, and Brad and I have talked about this and talked about with other council members. I think the big challenge we have now is resetting everything. How do we go and continue to do the great things that we were working on in Bellevue prior to this, but taking into account this tremendous change and what it means to the city and how we really focus on our priorities? And I agree with, and I think taking the $450,000 is a good first step in saying, these are our priorities and we're going to focus on that. And we know that there are other things that we're going to have to put on the back burner. But I'm, I'm really looking forward to the council and the city and the staff, it's done a great job, to start thinking about, you know, the next, where's Bellevue going in a different direction than we had thought in January? And, and how do we get there and how do we come out of this and really have a great Bellevue going forward? I'm very encouraged by what's happening. It's just that we have a lot to tackle. And so I really appreciate the staff's work and the way it's laid out. Looking forward to getting to the substantive things and making some decisions on it. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Robertson?
King Mayor, am I on?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. So a couple of comments. One, I really wanted to thank the city leadership team and all the staff who have worked through this. Really pleased with how on top of things the management has been. I appreciate the facilitating the human services grants of $450,000 for rental assistance. Because I think that's really important as people are, as unemployment claims drop, as people's jobs are affected. Rent is one of those things that is going to be really important. And even though evictions are paused by, under state proclamation of the mayor, it doesn't mean that people don't have to pay rent. It doesn't mean that they won't be evicted later when it's lifted if they haven't paid rent. And so the cheapest thing we could do is to keep people from becoming homeless and to help them with that. So I'm really pleased with that. I hope that anyone who is worried about making their rent will go to our website and look at the human services agencies that we donated money to and apply for some help because the help is out there. I also wanted to thank a lot of the businesses, particularly Amazon and Microsoft who have donated money to, and others who have donated money to funds to help small businesses keep going. I think that's going to be really important and I'm glad that we are already working with the Chamber and the Bellevue On Town Association and the city and others to try to make sure that our businesses will be there when the stay-home, stay healthy order is lifted. We want to make sure that we keep our small businesses. I mean, the economy before COVID was the best economy in my lifetime and would like to see it come back as quickly as possible. So I'm glad that we're working on that. I hope that we will continue to really put a lot of focus on that, particularly before the crisis is over, as, as it starts to wind down. That's going to be really important. Finally, I wanted to also give props to the communications team for use of my Bellevue app in pushing notifications onto people's devices. I think that's really helpful. I think we should keep doing that. I would encourage the leadership to send out information about how people can apply for rental assistance, how they might apply for business help to the app to send out those links. Because I was getting those, was really excited to see it, and that's a really good way to get the message out. Finally, I think that there's a little bit of serendipity in the, the choice of our mayor and deputy mayor ahead of this crisis. We did not know this was coming. But to have someone who's so knowledgeable about healthcare issues and medical care as the mayor and someone who is a very active member of the business community as the deputy mayor, I think that our leadership of the council is very well-positioned to really be great facilitators of both the medical issues and the business issues that are coming, and human services issues that are coming out of this crisis. So I wanted to thank Mayor Robinson and Deputy Mayor Newen House for that. Also, I know that the city is looking at the budget. We're looking at holding the line and making sure we can cut what we can cut. We're going to have a big discussion about that. That is a, we are budget year this year. And this is going to really affect our bottom line. And so we need to make sure that we can continue to hold, hold the line. I think Councilmember Lee and I are the only council members left from the last recession where we built up the reserves, which we're going to be drawing on now. But I remember, and I'm sure he does as well, what it was like to cut and hold the line. It was hard, but I know Bellevue's up to the task and we're better positioned to do so because of those reserves. So, yeah, I'm really pleased at all the work of the staff. And I hope that City Manager Miyaki and team will convey that all the way through the organization. I'm hearing from members of the public how confident they feel at how Bellevue's handling this. And so thank you for that and thank you to my colleagues for your leadership during this crisis.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Appreciate those kind words. And it's, it's just, this council is an amazing group of people who work very well together with all their different skill sets. That's what we're seeing right now. Councilmembers on?
Yes, thank you. I echo the comments about the appreciation for staff and your leadership, Mayor, because I think we were one of the first cities to declare an emergency so that we were able to leverage the, the resources and get things done very quickly. Because in a pandemic, moving quickly on some immediate relief is top of mind and also because it's about how we keep people housed, make sure people have food, and that it's about the safety and health of our community. And so I know how hard our leadership has worked and first responders and our hospital staff. So I really, really appreciate that. I think that when I think about the immediate relief and then the recovery, there are going to, I mean, I think about the fact that this is a new normal, that when we come out of this with all of the still unknowns around the COVID, I, I don't think that we're going to be at business as usual. And so I also want to appreciate the fact that our communities are following the social distancing guidelines because the quicker that we can flatten the curve, the better off we are as an entire community. I was also thinking about how quickly we were able to move on funding for those five nonprofits as an emergency stopgap. Had an opportunity to listen in to some of the discussions at the federal level where they talk about federally supported, state-led, and locally executed. So we are really the front line for our community to make sure that we are taking care of their needs. And so it's a really important part of what we need to do. I was also thinking about Councilmember Lee's comments and also an email that we received from 19 nonprofits that provide services in Bellevue about making sure that as we move forward with funding, that we are looking at culturally competent services and outreach that reach some of those communities where access to information, language barriers, digital divide are an issue that we need to be cognizant of in addition to the mental health of our community during a pandemic. Very blessed that our community has reached out, both the local community and neighbors, helping neighbors as well as partnering with our business community. We are all in this together. And I think that as we navigate the system of recovery and rescue, I'm also thinking about the fact that the, the school districts are closed or only online for the remainder of the school year and what some additional needs might be from the community. When I think of more than 20,000 students that are now getting learning from home, how that really works. So I would say as we move forward, really how we take all of those into account, how we prioritize our spending and what we focus on, and how we really leverage the funding from the federal level. There's a fourth bill that's being discussed and how we advocate for more dollars to cities. The state budget cuts and how that might impact our financial resources. From the third recovery bill, the money appears to be going to King County. How we get our fair share of that allocation so that we can leverage our money and spend it in the most effective way to serve our community while leveraging other monies like the Seattle Foundation, Microsoft, Amazon, partnering with the Chamber. So lots to do. I'm super excited to work with my fellow council members. I do believe that we have what it takes with our, with our city staff and all of our partners to get this done, along with our business and nonprofits. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmembers on. Councilmember Barksdale?
Let's look up, oh, perfect. No longer muted. Okay. First of all, as, as mentioned by everyone else, thanks to city staff and leadership, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newen House, and others for the great work in helping to lead us through this pandemic. And just want to say, you know, I could sign on pretty much everything that's already been said. Just want to sort of reemphasize the, looking at the long-term impact, but also not just the, the economy, the economic impact, but also just, you know, that sense of belonging in our community. And I think coming out of this, a lot of people are going to yearn for that engagement within the community. And just want to figure out how we can build on that, get ahead of, you know, putting in any sort of systems in place to, you know, foster that and nurture that so we can strengthen along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Newen House?
Mayor, first Kate Behrens, thank you for the overview. Appreciate that, that update. Want to thank the mayor for her leadership and tireless efforts on behalf of the city. Every time I think I've called her of late, she's been on another conference call advocating for, for, for the city and for funds and always looking to help the, the residents and the businesses of this great city. So thank you so much, Mayor. But also want to thank our police, our fire, our first responders as they've put their lives at risk more than ever responding to calls and situations around the city. And boy, what a great example a lot of these nonprofits have been, have been setting within our community as well, just doing tremendous work in our community. And as Councilmember Robertson said earlier, you know, that 450K is very well-spent and will go a long way to help those dealing with rent or food issues. But that's a very good investment on behalf of the city. And I also want to say the tremendous job that City Manager Brad Miyaki and the senior leadership team, staff has been doing. It's just, as others have, have noted, just a tremendous top-notch job, you know, under difficult circumstances, finding unique and creative ways in some cases to continue to support the community and maintain our services during this difficult time. That's no small task and we should recognize how well the city has maintained itself and continued to function in, you know, during this pandemic. And, and also a special shout-out to, to Brad Harwood. I think he's been doing a fantastic job, our chief communications officer there and his team, by putting all those resources on, on the, on the city website, constantly reminding folks through, be it email blasts, be it social media, press releases, et cetera, and having one source for all information regardless of what your intent is. If you're a resident and you're not sure if you need to get tested or not, if you're a business looking for assistant, it is one, one source of information. I think all Bellevue residents and businesses have felt it's very helpful and it gets them down the path of the information that they need. And then especially, I, I just really have to talk about our tremendous community here in Bellevue. It's unbelievable how neighbors are helping neighbors everywhere we see. You know, for an example, that is a Facebook group that started called Bellevue COVID Community Task Force. It's this one central place, a Facebook group that is saying, hey, if you can't go get groceries because you have underlying health issues and you're concerned about getting COVID-19, let me go get the groceries for you. I'll leave them outside your front door. I mean, that's the kind of community I think that we all want to live in and be a part of. So the community response has been just, just tremendous and everyone looking out for each other. It's been incredible to see. So, and as well as adhering to the governor's directive of the social distancing and not gathering in large groups, et cetera. We've all heard that before. But I think Bellevue residents in particular have taken that to heart and have really done a, done a tremendous job. So I have some additional questions later, but I think we're going to get to some more of the specific content that I'll hold my questions for, but just wanted to relay that comment.
Thank you. You know, I'll try to be quick, but my colleagues have said everything that I would want to say. And I have to say the involvement of the council and how each council member represents the community in their own way and coming, bringing all the council members together on this. And you pretty much hit almost every need in the community, whether it's individuals or groups or businesses. And I just appreciate the, the character and the makeup of this council and the support of the staff. We definitely, to Councilmember Zahn's point, need to continue to advocate for the federal, state, and county funds that are becoming available and private funds that will become available as we move through this. And that's a conversation we need to keep having for our businesses and for our human service agencies who serve the community. our businesses and for our human service agencies who serve the community. And I appreciate the talk about the equity piece of this, making sure that the people who are the hardest to reach get the information that they need. I know that the city just goes out of its way to make sure that people are getting the information, but I would like to hear about maybe some of the special efforts that the city is doing to reach people that are hard to reach. And I'm very proud of the digital equity of our city. We were one of Bellevue's school districts. Every school district had challenges, but I think we had the least amount of challenges in terms of making sure that everybody who needed to be online was online and had the equipment that they needed and were able to participate in the remote learning. So, that's remarkably good. That doesn't happen overnight. That's something that we've been working on for a long time. So, I just want to reiterate how much I appreciate our city's responsiveness to this, emerging needs of the community for the businesses and the individuals. I know we will continue to step up to the plate, and I'm looking forward to discussions on how we are going to move through recovery and continue to thrive. So, thank you. And if you can, Kate, reference the information equity piece, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. And again, if it doesn't hit on everything, I can follow up after this. But as we talked about, we are concerned about how to reach those members of our community that traditionally don't need to connect with government for much, and so maybe don't have those established relationships. That's where we're tapping into some of our existing networks and encouraging them to reach out to people they know through their own network. So, kind of the, you know, you tell two friends, and then they tell two friends, and then they tell two friends, and the information kind of gets back to us that way. So, we're working with, as we talked about, those neighborhood leadership groups that we've built over time, the Bellevue Essentials Network that we've built over time, our Bellevue Diversity Advantage Network that was established several years ago, that can help us tap into various segments of the community, because we have connections with a small group of individuals that then have deeper connections into the community. So, that's kind of on the community side. We're going to continue those efforts here from that sort of informal network, where the gaps might be, and then figure out if we need to stand up something more formal that really gets us out into the community virtually, as it has to be right now, because we can't go door-to-door, talk to people face-to-face. But those are some of those efforts. On the business side, again, it's working with different business associations and actually just cold calling from business license lists and those kinds of things. So, to ensure that we can at least try to make that initial connection and then figure out what is the need, whether it's translation, whether it's, you know, some more technical expertise that we can connect someone to through the networks we're building with the Startup 425 folks and with the Bellevue Chamber and with the BDA, or other ways we can connect those small businesses up to resources, but trying to proactively reach out in different channels than we normally would and do something more proactive rather than wait for people to come to our website. As the deputy mayor pointed out, we do keep that website as up to date as we can. You've got links and phone numbers on the screen now, anybody that's watching. But we are very concerned about the segment of folks, both businesses and residents, that don't traditionally reach out to us. And we are trying, all of our levers, to try to proactively get in front of them and, of course, invite the council to share with us offline. If there are good connections for us to make, we are happy to do that.
Thank you very much. Are you ready? Do we have more of this presentation?
I think at this point, we're ready to turn it over to Nathan McComman to get to the next section.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Robertson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse and council. We really appreciate your comments and the dialogue and your support. It's very special. In this next section of the presentation, I will share with you and the viewing public how COVID-19 has impacted city services, how the city of Bellevue has adjusted operations over this past month. Our objectives have been to deliver effective essential services while limiting the spread of the virus and reducing risk to employees. We made changes per Governor Inslee's orders and public health direction. And as you can imagine, it has been a daunting assignment. Given the nature of a contagious disease, information is a key resource. The more people know, the better chance they have to make good choices. So, I'll begin by covering what we've done differently in communications. Next slide, please. We stood up a joint information center that is comprised of trained public information officers from across city departments. All public information about COVID-19 is vetted and coordinated through this team. As the event unfolded throughout the month of March, the communications team has been continually adapting its strategy to get information to the public that is relevant, timely, and accessible in a rapidly evolving extended crisis. And the team will continue to adjust as necessary. Practically every resource that is known to city staff is listed on the city's website, as Kate Behrens was just referring to. Due to the sheer volume of resources, the website has been reconfigured several times for easy access by the public. By typing in www.bellviewaw.gov, the first image to appear is a bar at the top of the screen with the key information for the people of Bellevue. Then there is a link to an extensive list of community resources, some of which Deputy City Manager Kate Behrens described to you earlier and highlighted by the redbox on the screen. There is also a link to a useful list of resources for businesses on the far left. In the main text in the middle, the red arrows point to resources for people who need help, people who want to volunteer, and people who wish to donate. Next slide, please. So this slide is basically the same webpage, and it's just scrolling down the screen and this menu appears. While there are many, many resources, both public and private, provided on the community resources page, I want to draw your attention to five sections, four of which the arrows are pointing to there on the screen. There are headings that lead to very helpful links for donations, assistance with rent and utilities, food, and ways to volunteer. Next slide, please. Then scrolling farther down the screen, at the bottom of the page is an easy form where anyone may input his or her name, the contact information, select a button either asking for help or offering to help. They can type in a little description if they want, and then submit. The information from the form goes to the communications team for follow-up. To date, the communications team has taken and responded to over sixty event-related inquiries. Next slide, please. In addition to daily web bulletins, email blasts, MyBellevue app alerts, and real-time social media posts, reach a broad audience, and the feedback from the neighborhood groups helps affirm whether good information is reaching the community well. The easiest way to see the latest updates is to select the link labeled "updates" from the banner at the top of the website when it first opens. Again, that's at www.bellviewaw.gov. Major updates are shared in the five top languages in Bellevue, which are English, Spanish, Chinese, Korean, and Russian. Given how fast information has arrived and changed with this event, some translations are still being prepared on the newest resource pages. So, if you were to look through the website right now, you would see a mix of progress. Some things are translated and some things are still in the process of translation and will be posted soon. We leverage public health and state government translations also, whenever possible, for key information that is necessary for all residents to understand in order to follow current orders and health recommendations. We also translate our city news releases that contain similar information from the city level, taking note that to successfully overcome the spread of COVID-19, everyone has to participate. And the information we share in combination with that of public health and the mainstream media is intended to educate and encourage as many people as possible. There are many things happening besides public communications, so now I will turn your attention to adjustments that we've made to the services of each department. Next slide. Thank you. You saw that coming. As you know, city facilities are closed to the general public, and these include City Hall, Bellevue Service Center, all community centers, Mercer Slough Environmental Center, the buildings at the Botanical Garden, all fire stations, and the Factory of Police Substation. So, it's not to say that fire stations are closed, but the general public cannot walk up, say, just for a sightseeing tour, but they would certainly take somebody if they had an emergency. In addition, sections of parks are also closed, in particular playgrounds, athletic spaces, shelter houses, and the pier at Maidenbauer Bay Park. Across all departments, we have initiated several changes. We activated the Emergency Operations Center, which is supporting all continuing services. The activation is in accordance with the council-adopted Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, and that was adopted most recently in January of 2019. To create more separation, we staggered shifts over seven days per week for certain technical teams. Field workers must use safe practices in line with the governor's orders and public health guidance. Rigorous cleaning is required on all equipment, vehicles, and workspaces. In certain places, employees must also follow a screening protocol before entering a workspace. Individual departments have also adapted in other ways. The city clerk's office, as we're experiencing tonight, is coordinating with the city attorney's office and IT department to support online public meetings. To the extent possible, the city clerk's office also continues responding to public records requests and building permit files. The city attorney's office continues to effectively serve as legal counsel, and I probably could not overstate that the demand has been exceptionally high to research many legal questions surrounding COVID-19. In the city manager's office, many may not know that the city manager actually serves as the incident commander for an emergency. We also stay in communication with our state and federal contacts for what might impact Bellevue from those levels of government. We also continue to talk with the community stakeholder groups to support and identify needs related to equity and inclusion. And from the city manager's office, we also provide support and coordination for homeless services in the community in partnership with CFH Sophia Way in King County. The community development department has three divisions, and those divisions have made some changes. Economic Development leads the coordination of regional business partners, has put together relief and communication strategy for businesses in Bellevue, holds nearly daily communication with human services providers, our communications team, Startup 425, the Chamber of BDA, and others, and has initiated outreach support for small businesses to help connect them to good resources, as you heard from Deputy City Manager Kate Behrens. The neighborhoods team in that department created a COVID-19 resource guide for residents and devised a remote way to keep language hours open from many City Hall. The planning group has served as a supplemental research team for other departments and has found alternate ways of interaction with stakeholders using technology in order to maintain progress on normal planning projects. The development services department, you may recall, recently went 100% paperless with its permitting systems, which has allowed uninterrupted service delivery during this crisis. In fact, the permanent application volumes only experienced a modest drop in March. I would note that the inability to hold public hearings may cause delay for some land use decisions in the near future. And the department also worked with CFH to evaluate modifications for social distancing at Lincoln Center in response to COVID-19. Our finance and asset management department secured a non-call agreement with a specialty cleaning service that will respond within just a few hours. And the department also initiated accounting mechanisms to record associated city costs of COVID-19 and has persuaded many of our vendors that perhaps they could email their invoices rather than sending them via paper. Our fire department has made a couple adjustments. Of course, this is a type of event they're used to, but even though with the pandemic, they've adjusted its response protocols to require personal protective equipment on every call, and they initiated their own screening protocols at fire stations for all staff before they enter. The human resources department has just been inundated trying to interpret federal, state, and local policies and directives, and they've been coming at a very fast pace. They also work for the city's health benefit insurance carriers to prevent negative impact to employees' healthcare benefits. And they set up resource guides and frequently ask questions for our staff, and the department is adapting essential training for teleworkers. Our information technology department salvaged 100 surplus laptops that were scheduled to be sent somewhere else in order to support additional employees working from home. To do that, they upgraded network bandwidth, purchased additional VPN licenses, and as a result, has been enjoying a 50% increase in help desk calls. They also enhanced security monitoring protocols and is currently in the process of testing new software tools for remote meetings. Parks and Community Services Department, as we've been discussing, especially since the beginning of this presentation, has experienced a significantly increased demand and coordination for human services needs. On the probation front, all probation functions are closed except for electronic home detention. The police department has changed its practices in approaching emergency calls. Officers use extra screening questions. They wear personal protective equipment. They stay outside the home while responding to a call, and they may even ask for emergency medical technicians to assist with such a call. The transportation department changed the way that it conducts its work sites. So, capital project work sites now must provide a COVID-19 safety plan to allow construction and inspection staff to continue working. The use of confined workspaces, such as construction trailers, have been eliminated. And they now conduct frequent checks on the staff that are essential working onsite or in the field to gauge their morale and health and also to check their COVID-19 worksite compliance. And then the department has also expanded outreach to the public and local businesses regarding city projects. And finally, the utilities department changed its customer notifications of past due bills from a door tag to a mailed letter, which offers an invitation to contact us to learn how we can help. The department also prioritized maintenance activities to minimize service interruptions to customers. An example would be shutting down a water main to fix a major leak. Next slide, please. In addition to service for the community, one role of the city of Bellevue is the responsibility of limiting the risk of spreading the disease. And as you've heard throughout this presentation, we are communicating through all means available the seriousness of the disease and the governor's order. When staff interacts with the public, we take every precaution of distance, cleaning, and protective wear for the health of the resident and the staff. Unfortunately, staff has had to disperse many gatherings, more than we wish we would have and would have had to. Some people are forgetting the gathering is truly a dangerous behavior that has already led to the loss of human lives. Through various means of communication, we have received many complaints about people who have ignored the governor's order. And as examples, people have stepped over barricades around the barricade tape. They've played sports right in front of the closed sign, and they've been openly coughing at bus stops and so on. We know that people will continue to complain, and we only ask that they not call 911. We do not want to overwhelm the 911 system. We would like to save that system for the most critical emergency calls. We prefer that they use the MyBellevue app or the police department's website. In the app is an In the app is an option to report a gathering, and the information goes directly to the Police Department. In these two ways, the website and the app, we can save 911 dispatch for the most critical emergency calls. We had a very similar experience during the last Independence Day celebration, and as you might guess, fire calls go way up on the Fourth of July. So at that time, when people began reporting the illegal shooting off of fireworks through the app, it actually really relieved the pressure from the 911 dispatch service. Next slide, please. Lastly, I want to touch on how Bellevue remains connected within the region. Every day, Seattle King County Public Health holds a meeting with emergency managers around the county. A few times a week, area law enforcement chiefs meet, as well as the fire chiefs. Area municipal executives inform each other through the Sound Cities Association bulletins and calls with King County City Administrators Group. We also receive counsel from various professional associations of a variety of disciplines. Finally, staff of the Emergency Operations Center keeps in communication with other emergency operations centers, including that of King County, State of Washington, and even Overlake Hospital. At this moment, we want to pause again the presentation to hear your feedback, allow the council to have more discussion on the information of this second session, and then we can continue the presentation afterward.
Okay.
And Robinson.
Yeah, thank you very much for that rest of the presentation there. Okay, I'm going to call each council member in this order, Councilmember Barksdale, Councilmember Zahn, Councilmember Robertson, Councilmember Stokes, Councilmember Lee, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, and then me. So let's start with Councilmember Barksdale. If you have questions or comments. Councilmember Barksdale, are you there?
Oh, sorry, I had my hardware mic muted. Thanks again to the staff for the work that you're doing. I just had a question in line with the long-term planning. To what extent are we looking at data across the different community divisions, nonprofits, and so forth, just to kind of see what the trends are throughout the city?
You have the same interest we have, and I would say because of the rapidly evolving nature of the event, we are trying to get our hands around the information we need to know. There is a good recording system in the EOC, it's called Web EOC, so there's a tracking of anything that goes through there. And we also have the outreach that you heard from Kate Behrens regarding the businesses and then the human services outreach, but I would say none of that is coordinated yet. The closest we have would be through our Joint Information Center, where, as I mentioned earlier in my presentation, all the information that comes in or is pushed out related to COVID-19, we really try to run it through that team so that they can track it. To your second point about the analytics and how does it inform, it's not like you typically ask us where we have great calculations of how to evaluate it, so it's more real-time decisions. People are sitting in the EOC, and we are constantly improving as we go along.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmembers on.
I had a couple of questions. I appreciate the fact that it is very much adjusting in real time and hearing about all the things that city staff are doing. It is an unprecedented time, so I can only imagine our legal department trying to really decipher what this means from the legal aspect and all of the work from our IT department to make sure that we have staff teleworking the public outreach and communication and making sure that works. I did have a question from a staff standpoint. Are all the staff still employed, even the ones that may be in a vulnerable population that are not able to telework? Can you comment on that?
So the vulnerable population part would be kind of a secondary factor, but not all the staff are employed. There are some that are actually off work because the nature of their job didn't give them a job to perform. You might remember earlier on, we stopped senior programs, we actually stopped some programs that treated or served vulnerable populations, and then we eventually closed all the community centers. So clearly, there were employees working in all those community centers. We've been able to reassign some. The Emergency Operations Center has needed an extra boost in staffing, so some have had the opportunity, if they had the skill set, to be reassigned, but there are a number of people who are actually not working right now.
And so would they be, they're considered standby, actually laid off, eligible for unemployment?
They are eligible for unemployment, and they're, so it's both. We could call them back if we could find work for them.
Okay. Yeah, because that's one of the concerns too, is that our own staff and whether they're going to have the resources during this period to survive without income. And then I was glad to see just how much collaboration we're doing with Sound Cities Association, having the EOC activated, so thank you for that. I appreciated seeing that we have our community resource materials translated in multiple languages. I did have one other question too around the essential work and doing it safely. So I think both this slide and the previous council discussion had a note about personal protective equipment, and I think that we have all seen the lack of supply from the standpoint of PPE and the shortage. So are our workers able to have the PPE in order to do their work, those that are out in the community, as well as those that are still performing work that require PPE?
Yes, our workers do have the personal protective equipment they need according to the type of job that they do. There are various levels depending on the job that they do, plus all the other practices of cleaning and social distancing. But you raise a good point. We do have our eye on the near horizon, wondering when might that supply run out, and we've been actually very blessed with the number of people who stepped up in the community and wanted to donate, and it was right on time.
Okay. And then I think I saw that the city actually donated a significant amount of N95s to our hospitals, is that right?
To the hospital, I wouldn't be able to answer that.
Oh, okay. I thought I had seen something about that. That's all right. To Councilmember Barksdale's point, as we start to think about the recovery aspect and running financial analysis and scenario planning for our budget so that as we look at making decisions on where we might be spending our money, both from now till year end as well as budgeting for 2021 and 22, really understanding our financial picture and forecasting where we're at is going to be really important. So I'm thinking that that'll be in a future presentation, but I'm very much interested in understanding our financial picture moving forward. And then as we reemerge from our stay-at-home order, what does that new normal of staying safe look like? And if we are going to need to continue to stay with the six-foot social distancing, how does that impact our workforce and how we do our work both inside of the city as well as how our community stays safe, though we don't end up with an increase in the exposure from the COVID will be really important. So I look forward to working with my colleagues and the city leadership on working through that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. So I really appreciate the city providing information on how people can help their fellow Eastsiders or Bellevue residents, and particularly with regard to people who need money, money for rent, food, utilities, et cetera. I think the business assistance is also really important. I know we're trying to get the word out to help people support their local businesses so they're still there when the stay-home order comes to an end, which hopefully it will in the not-too-distant future. And I know that we are on top of trying to make sure that we can help kickstart a lot of the businesses once the stay-home order is lifted. I also wanted to thank the folks who have reached out to me, who've reached out to the city, who have brought in personal protective equipment for the city. It's so important for our first responders and other of our public-facing employees to make sure that they can protect themselves. I know that we are still short in many sectors of the PPE. If we have information, there's a lot of people that want to, for example, sew masks. If we have information on how we can connect folks who might want to sew masks, which can be used for whatever the needs are, to the organizations that need them, for example, Congregations for the Homeless I know was looking for masks to help their volunteers stay safe, help their clients remain healthy, et cetera, that would be something I would encourage us to continue to do because there will be a need for personal protective equipment for people working in jobs where they are coming into contact with people, but also for the everyday person as masks have been recommended. So would love to see the city facilitate more communication or resource availability for people that might want to get out their sewing machine and stay busy during the stay-home order by helping their neighbors. We have so many people in this community, I love Bellevue, who are helping their neighbors, and we just need to make sure that we continue to provide ways that they can do so in ways that are really productive. So thanks so much.
Councilmember Stokes.
Good comments, and we've covered a lot of ground on this. It's really pretty exciting, and I'm glad we had a chance to finally get together and kind of go over all this. It just moves so fast. I think concerns and focuses have already been mentioned. I think those, one of the things I wanted to talk about a little bit, or just put out there, is that what I'm hoping from this and what I'm seeing a lot is that we're, there's some new normals and some adjustments we're making in terms of focusing on different issues, and I think they're positive. And it's always good to have some positive, come down to a very, very negative situation. For example, the realization that we need to put more into and work with community needs, work with individuals, and have a better bond, which we're developing with the community itself, with business and individuals, and a more positive attitude on next door, that we are in this together and we need to help each other, and I'm hoping that that will continue in, you know, doing things like the temporary shelters and building the, with King County, the temporary place for people to go when they need to be carried under tents and things like that that are temporary. And the fact that we, and not just us, but Seattle, the county, places are said are addressing issues that have been put off for a long time because, well, we can't get around to it, it's going to cost us too much money. All of a sudden, when the need comes and it's really important and you have to do something, and it is life and death, it's amazing how we can actually figure out how we do things. And I think that's, this city has done that very, very well. So I'm encouraged that on homelessness and affordable housing, those issues and other things that we're doing, and on the other side of it in the businesses and how we're going to move forward, I think in a more collaborative fashion will also come from this. So again, it goes back to the city and all the stuff we've been going through. It's just amazing to see how the city, which includes the community and all of us working together, is moving forward on this. I think we're doing about as good a job as anybody could do, and I think that's amazing. So the only other kind of question I had coming out of this is, I'm glad we finally had a meeting, and what I'm interested in is where do we go from here? When's the next meeting? When are we going to start talking about the things that Councilmember Robertson was just talking about and others have mentioned is, what are the next, where are the next steps, and how do we start pushing this forward? And it's not going to just change overnight. I mean, once we get back away from the social, you know, distance, it's not going to magically get where we all go, you know, 100 people get together in a small room. So I'm looking forward to us having other ways to have these conversations with the council itself and with staff and continuing on this path. So I really appreciate this meeting, I'm glad we had this, and I hope this technology works because we have to do this some more. Overall, I think it's just great, and that's all I had to comment on. I know we have some actions to take, but I think we're on a great path, and it's the leadership and the staff have just done a great job. Really excited to be part of this. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Stokes. Nathan, did you want to comment on some of those questions now or during the next part of the presentation?
I can comment in particular on the meetings come up. So I think the council's aware that it's a pretty limited list of purposes for which the council can meet, and we are planning to schedule coming meetings within those limitations for the greater conversations about how we're going to bounce back from all of this and the economic interest in the community coming back together. That's going to have to wait a while until the orders change from the governor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Stokes that we need to be looking at and talking about economic impact, you know, the tax revenue versus our plan for our future, and I hope that's, you know, a discussion. However, at this point, I really want to say that Bellevue is an amazing city, and Bellevue staff and Bellevue public, Bellevue community, individuals, and organizations. I mean, this is an extraordinary time, and this brings out the extraordinary effort and brings out the best in what we have and what we are. You know, the people, the staff has been working during this difficult time, you know, and, you know, I want to just mention a few people specifically. Even at this time, we're supposed to be, you know, working from home, and a lot of things, you know, are not possible, but amazingly, when I, you know, contact, I connected with some of the city staff, they're working harder than normal, harder than usual, because I guess, you know, the telecommunication, virtual meetings are more efficient. We can actually get more done without having to drive and find parking and do all that stuff. So it's a good thing that's happening in a horrible time. You know, there's always silver lining in the dark cloud, but, you know, this really brings up, you know, the people that we have. Now, I want to mention one of the person, obviously, it's Brad Miyarki, City Manager. I mean, he's working, I believe, day and night, you know, there's a lot of things unexpected, a lot of things that require attention, and the people are not, you know, immediately, you know, at, in the same place, so, but, you know, they have to be all responding. So it's a lot of pressure, a lot of challenge, a lot of changes taking place, a lot of flexibility as they cope with. So I have to say, give him my kudo. The other one I have worked with is IT, Jeff Chandler, because we're setting up the telecommunication to be more efficient. I mean, he's worked his butt off, taking the risk, you know, coming to my house and work with me, and of course, we tried to, you know, keep all the distance and all that stuff, but still, you know, it's an absolute effort, it's taking the risk. Sometimes you think maybe it's unnecessary, but sometimes it is beyond, you know, the call of duty, so I want to give him another shout-out. The other one is our first responders. It's amazing what they have done. Chief Hagan and Chief Meyer, you know, they are managing EOC for the whole region, it's not just Bellevue, and they're working with the people out there who need help and who need... and who need personal touch, personal contact. And they're taking risk, they're going out with their life on the line. But they are out there and sometimes working with very difficult conditions. You know, people mentioned about PPE, about masks. And, you know, so they have a shortage, as we all know. But they're out there and they're taking the risk. And so I believe there's lots of other folks that we have seen, where I'm talking about, we have not interacted, but, you know, I think they all are there. They're all doing what they're supposed to do. The city carries on despite what happens. And this is, I think, shows the city's ability and quality. The other part, you know, that's the city staff side. And the other part is the, the community. The community is the hospitals, the doctors, the nurses, people who are still also the first responders. They are risking their life, and most of them live in the city, a lot of them do. You know, they are our residents and they, they are there on frontline. So I don't need to say more about that. I think that's pretty obvious. The third part is the community. We have individuals, that's amazing, that came out of the woodworks. You know, I know that in the Chinese-American community specifically, because, you know, I've been busy focusing on working and coordinating with some of these folks. Because they are not traditionally, they don't engage with the government, with, you know, the community as much. And they're very independent, and they're small businesses. They run restaurants, they run small businesses, two or three, 10 people or less. And they are facing tough times. You know, they have to close their stores, close their shops. But, you know, they are responding. Just say first, the restaurants, if they have to close, they cannot run business as usual. But they have employees, and they want to keep their employees working. So what they do is, they are still preparing food. And what to do with the food, they of course, you know, if they can sell takeout, they do. But they have volunteered to give the food they make by the employees and donate to hospitals, to medical staff, to nurses, to nursing homes, to other folks that might need food, you know, to other facilities. Since at Jubilee Reach, Jubilee Reach has been serving 250 to 500 meals and groceries for their clients every day. It's amazing. And, you know, so all these people working together, they're not being able to provide the food. And Jubilee Reach has volunteers that do not have masks. So, you know, some of these Chinese-American community have been able to have masks available. I know there's organizations that have been buying 10,000, 10,000s of masks that, you know, that came as available, and they're donating them. And in fact, you know, that's what, you know, one of the things that we did. Bellevue staff doesn't have enough masks. So Chief Hagan was able to meet with some Chinese-American organization and community members, and they donated masks for them. They donated some PPE. And in turn, you know, our firefighters and police departments are able to in turn donate whatever they don't need to other hospitals and to organizations that need masks. So I think this is all demonstration of what people have really come up, you know, during this emergency. And I think really, one is to prove that, you know, at extraordinary times, people have, you know, risen up to their challenges. And I hope that this will continue. And I hope that we will continue to find that these people that have risen to the crisis can remain to be our connection and contact and to learn how to be an engaged part of the community. I think this is part of the, I think, opportunity we have to establish the relationship with organizations, with resources that we normally have not had. Now, they've come up, they have risen, they come to us, we know who they are. Let's recognize them, let's stay with them, let's utilize their resources and ability to help whatever we have to, you know, tackle in the future, big or small. So I really feel very, very blessed that we have such a community of the staff, of the city, of the people, organizations. And this crisis really showed that, you know, we can respond to it. We can handle whatever problems that may come up. It's a question of how do we, you know, engage with them? How do we, you know, give them the appreciation so that we can continue this relationship and moving forward? So to close, really, Bellevue city staff has done really well. It's because the citizens, and we all are there, we all are together. Somebody said that. We're all in this together. We're all going to prevail, working together. Thank you.
Mayor?
Are you there?
Thank you. Yeah, I got muted and I couldn't unmute myself. Thank you. Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, Nathan, and I'm sure we might have another slide here or two to about the next steps, but just a couple of comments and questions. I really think that we're at a point where we kind of need to shift our mindset a little bit from reactive to proactive. I mean, the city's done such a tremendous job reacting to this pandemic. And we don't know what the future holds, but, you know, right, right now, I think we need to be preparing for what May 4th looks like and what we're going to do to, to get both people and businesses back on track. Of course, we're going to continue to pursue state federal funding and following the mandates set by the state or the county as well. But I think right now, we need to be preparing for that, for May 4th. And specifically, what are those tactics and protocols that we're going to put in place to try and get back to a sense of normalcy, whatever that might look like, as quickly as possible? You know, I've seen other ideas floating around, anything from, you know, offering free parking throughout the city to stimulate retailer or restaurants, to start planning and developing shovel-ready projects for potential federal stimulus funding that might come in for infrastructure or transportation projects. So I think these are the types of things that we need to start thinking about, and I'm sure we'll get presentations on them going forward. But I think we need to start shifting our mindset about what a post-May 4th may look like. Again, we don't know for sure where we're going to stand on May 4th, but hopefully the directive will be lifted by the governor at that time. So the one question I did have for you, Nathan, and I don't mean to catch you off guard with this question, but I just saw a media report earlier today about, and part of your presentation here were talking about, you know, law enforcement meetings happening, it seems like almost on a daily basis. But I saw that there was a pretty substantial increase, 87% increase in property crime and burglaries in the city of Seattle. And part of that is due to vacant businesses. Do you have any insight, have we seen any of that in Bellevue at all? Can you, can you comment on all that?
It's an amazing coincidence that I was just talking with Chief Milet today. I was trying to get a sense for how calls have been. I think Bellevue has been in a pretty fortunate place so far. It's not just, it's, I can't say it's been silent. So there have been a few calls of a similar nature. And I think our police force has been anticipating some kind of shift here soon when people start getting itchy because they've been contained too long. So we're not taking that for granted.
Okay, good, good. Well, that's a good report. And I'm glad we're not suffering from those same effects as they are in Seattle. And then last comment, just to echo what Councilmember Zonit said about, you know, what are the financial ramifications look like for the city? I know the city manager in particular is watching this very closely, but I think the sooner we have an understanding of what the big picture is here from a budget perspective and how that's going to impact the city now and in the future, I think it's important for all of us as a body, as a council, to start wrapping our head around in order to start making decisions or further research regarding what that picture looks like. So just another comment there, but thanks again, Nathan. Appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I really love Slide 11. I think that is just remarkable, remarkably good information for the community. And I like the tab at the bottom for volunteers because one thing I hear over, over again from the community is, how can I help? So I really appreciate this, in addition to ours via Bellevue website. And I would be remiss if I did not call out former Councilmember Wallace for all the work that he has done to do a fund and supply drive for Congregations for the Homeless. He's just been a tremendous example of how our community can help each other. And I will, I know Councilmember Barksdale commented on this, but I, looking at the human service organizations, there's this desperate need for data that covers all the needs of the community from all the different organizations and who they serve, you know, what kind of equipment they need, what kind of funding they need, and what equipment and funding supplies are they getting? So I know that there are a lot of companies that do this kind of work that have the ability to help us out. And I hope that we are reaching out to them so that we can create a database that we can work off of, and I think that'll serve us well in the future as well. That's all I had to say. Nathan, you want to continue?
So I would just say, point well taken. Thank you for the thoughts, Mayor. And from here, I'm going to pass it over to City Manager Brad Miyaki.
Thank you, Nathan and Kate. Councilmember Newenhouse, it's interesting you brought up the property crime topic because we've heard some of that, what was happening in Seattle. Some of the question, actually, the Bellevue Downtown Association reached out to us about just today, in fact. And happy to report from talking to Chief Milet that our property crimes have not increased, not as of yet, at least. So it's good news there. So in terms of looking ahead, it goes without saying that we're going to follow the orders of the governor and public health and will continue through all channels available to reinforce the messages of using healthy practices. We also continue our efforts at looking at ways we provide financial relief to our businesses, nonprofits, and hospital and healthcare institutions. As you know, the federal government has produced three COVID-19 financial relief packages and is working on more, as was alluded to by Councilmembers on. We're following those packages very closely to learn what they need for Bellevue. And we have many experts that are looking at the funding packages on our behalf. And we're working closely with our regional partners, as well as our association of cities and others, to understand the funding package and where we can receive benefits for our community, our businesses and city operation. And as we know more, we'll begin, we'll share that information with the council on how we can access not only federal funds, but state and local funds as well. You know, much of the funds right now, as we can tell, will be flowing through the state and ultimately perhaps even to the county. So we're working actually on the local level as well just to make sure we understand how those logistics will work. We also will continue to assess the epidemic impact on the city's finances that was mentioned by a number of council members of wanting to understand its impact overall on the city's finances. As you can tell, we are very concerned about that as well and taking a close look at that. Our finance director and her staff are continually scenario planning daily to get a handle on what that looks like, but not just themselves, but actually working with regional other entities, such as the state and the county and the city of Seattle. In terms of recovery, a number of you mentioned like, where, what does it look like for May 4th? Or what are we going to look like when we kind of get our head above water and get out of the woods here? The city currently is developing recovery scenarios for the city's operations on how we can get up our operations to provide, to continue to provide services to our community. In addition, our economic development team is working closely with the Bellevue Chamber as well as the Bellevue Downtown Association in developing a welcome back strategy for local businesses, as was alluded to by Deputy City Manager Barron's. And we're also exploring innovative ways to get businesses and nonprofits back up and running, as was alluded to by a number of you as a concern, so we continue to do that. In closing, because I'm making the conclusionary remarks here for this presentation, and I just want to take a moment to offer special thanks to a few of the corporations, as was alluded by to some of the council members, as well as others that have provided timely, much needed help in this time of need. Some of those were mentioned by you, included Amazon, Microsoft, Walmart, Bellevue's, Bellevue-based Eddie Bauer, Global Innovation Exchange. You know, the Bellevue Chamber and Bellevue Downtown Association have been really excellent partners to work with during this difficult time. Several of the hotels have reached out and offered spaces for our tired workers and for quarantine spaces. And as well as several private members, such as civic clubs and faith groups, have given their own resources for the good of the community. You know, I wanted to, as many of you mentioned, wanted to thank the hard work of the staff, especially the leadership team and managing and leading the city through this crisis. And lastly, again, I wanted to thank the council for your unwavering support for me and the staff and your patience in undertaking tonight's virtual meeting, which is likely the way we'll be conducting business in the very near future. And so with that, we look forward to working closely with the council in the near future. A lot of hard work ahead of us, and this concludes our presentation. And with that, I'll hand it back to Mayor Robinson.
Thank you very much. That's a great presentation, very informative for us and for the community. I'm going to ask council members that if you have more questions, to go ahead and email Brad or whomever and hope that we can move on to the consent calendar. And I don't have a way of getting your feedback on that, so I hope you're comfortable that you've asked all the questions you have to ask on this. So with the consent calendar, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
All those in favor? Thank you, second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, the consent calendar has passed. We are now under other ordinances, resolutions and motions, and we have ordinance 6506 in front of us and another one after that. Mr. Miyaki, can you introduce that, please?
Sure. These, there's a couple ordinances in front of you to ratify some of the emergency proclamations that have been, were signed off by you, Mayor, and for emergency purposes for the BNO tax relief as well as providing emergency funding for our Human Services Agency. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney Kathy Gerla to provide any additional comments before you take action on these two ordinances. Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, members of the council. The first ordinance that's before you tonight is ordinance 6506, which would ratify and confirm emergency order number one that was issued by the mayor involving the deferral of BNO tax payments for small businesses. Though as you are aware, early on in the COVID-19 outbreak, on March 3rd, the mayor issued a proclamation declaring that a civil emergency exists within the city of Bellevue due to the COVID outbreak. And during the existence of a proclaimed emergency, the mayor has the authority under the city code to issue emergency orders that are imminently necessary for the protection of life and property. And it's under that authority that on March 20th, the mayor signed emergency order number one. This order was issued in recognition of the extreme revenue losses that small businesses are experiencing because of the virus and also because of the necessary stay home orders in response to that. The order is intended to provide some cash flow relief for small businesses and help them retain their businesses during this time. And so to that end, the emergency order allows businesses with $5 million or less of taxable gross receipts during the 2019 tax year to defer their first and second quarter BNO tax payments until October 31st of this year. And without the emergency order, the quarterly tax payments would be due on April 30th and on July 31st of this year. So under the city code, the emergency orders issued by the mayor must be presented to the council for ratification and confirmation. And if not ratified and confirmed, the order will be void. So ordinance 6506, which is before you tonight, if adopted by the council, it would ratify the emergency order by doing two things. First, it ratifies and confirms all the actions that have been or will be taken by the city manager and any city staff to implement the emergency. by the city manager and any city staff to implement the emergency order. And secondly, the ordinance amends the city code in a manner that allows for these deferred BNO tax payments for the first and second quarter of 2020 only. The ordinance also contains an emergency clause and therefore it will take effect immediately upon adoption if the council adopts it tonight. So the alternatives and the options before the council are to either adopt the ordinance, therefore you ratify and confirm the emergency order, or to not adopt the ordinance, in which event the emergency order will be void and the deadlines for the first and second quarter of the BNO tax payments will not be extended or deferred. So that concludes the staff report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm going to run through the list. We'll start with Councilmembers on, then Robertson, Stokes, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, Councilmember Barksdale, Lee, and then me. You don't need to comment if you don't have anything that you want to ask or say, but you have an opportunity here, starting with Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you. I just, my question is, so this is a deferral, so we will still be collecting? It just means that we give the community a little more of an opportunity to weather this current COVID before they have to pay?
That's correct. It defers payments that would otherwise be due in April 30th and July 31st for the first two quarters, and it defers them until October 31st.
Okay, and we have sufficient funds in our reserves to pay our own bills when these funds are deferred?
Our finance director, Tony Call, was involved in putting together this ordinance in consultation with the city manager's office. So my assumption, I'm not the finance director, but my assumption is yes, there is sufficient funds. And and therefore, the recommendation was to go ahead and do this emergency order.
Great. Well, I really appreciate jumping on this so quickly because we need to do everything we can can to help the community. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Robertson.
I'm supportive of this. I think it's the appropriate thing to do. And I'm ready to vote. Yes, thanks.
Member Stokes.
Yeah, good questions and answers, just for the public to understand it. And yes, I'm ready to vote for it.
Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Yes, supportive, ready to vote for it.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Ready to vote.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
I support it.
Okay, and I'm very appreciative of the city's response to the need here and their nimbleness in drawing this up so quickly. So is there a motion to adopt ordinance 6506?
Yes, I move that we adopt ordinance number 6506 that ratifies and confirms order number one pursuant to the proclamation of emergency of March 3rd, 2020, and amending ordinance 5436, section one, as previously amended, to extend the deadline of certain business and occupation tax payments.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great, we adopt the ordinance 6506. We now are have in front of us ordinance 6507. Mr. Miyaki, could you introduce?
Again, I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney Kathy Gerla for, to provide further information about this particular ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So ordinance 6507 would ratify and confirm emergency order number two, which authorizes an increase in human services funding to provide emergency financial assistance to Bellevue residents. This order was issued by the mayor on March 24th, under the same authority to issue emergency orders as order number one. Deputy City Manager Kate Barron's discussed the substance and the need for this emergency order during the city manager's report earlier tonight. And many of you as well, I think, acknowledged the need for these funds to meet community needs during the pandemic. So I will not repeat all of that. But just to summarize, the emergency order increases the appropriation to the Human Services Fund by $450,000, transferring the funds from the general fund. And the purpose of the transfer is to increase funds available under existing contracts that the city has with five nonprofit human service organizations who are currently providing emergency financial assistance, such as rent, utilities and food. The emergency order authorized the city manager to amend the contracts with each of the five organizations to award an additional $90,000 under each contract. Those contracts have been amended and the funds have been provided. Ordinance 6507, before you tonight, if adopted, would ratify and confirm all of the actions that have been or will be taken by the city manager or other staff to implement the emergency ordinance, which in this case ratifies the contract amendments. And it also amends the biennial, the mid-biennial budget ordinance to increase the appropriation to the Human Services Fund by $400,000. And it also contains an emergency clause, allowing it to take effect immediately upon adoption. So again, the alternatives are the same as in the last one, which is to either adopt the ordinance and ratify and confirm the emergency order, or to not adopt the ordinance, in which event the emergency order will be void. And that concludes the report.
Thank you very much. We will go through the same order, Councilmembers on.
I support it. Thank you.
Mayor Robertson.
I'm supportive. I wanted just to point out that these, for the public, that these funds come from council contingency. When we set our budgets up, we always put some money aside that can be distributed by the council or appropriated by the council. And it's specifically so that when things come up that we're not expecting in the budget, we have the funds to do so. That this is exactly that type of situation. And I am supportive of this and will vote yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
I'm ready to go for it, what she just said.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Supportive, ready to vote.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Word.
Councilmember Lee.
I vote yes.
And I will just say, you know, this seems like a lot of money to be contributing, but it is such a puny drop in the budget compared to the need of these human service organizations. So I really hope that this is the start of more funding throughout the region for the vital services that these agencies provide, especially now. Okay, is there a motion from Deputy Mayor Newenhouse to adopt ordinance 6507?
A move that we adopt ordinance number 6507 that ratifies and confirms order number two pursuant to proclamation of emergency of March 3rd, 2020, and amending ordinance 6493, adopted December the 2nd, 2019, as previously amended to increase appropriation to the 2019, 2020 Human Services Fund budget by $450,000 in order to increase funding under contracts with nonprofit organizations to provide emergency financial assistance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor to adopt 6507, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And that passes. Thank you very much. This brings to conclusion our first remote council meeting. And I assume this is the first of many, but hopefully not too many. I hope that we can be sitting together again soon. But in the meantime, we will continue to take care of the business of the city. And I want to thank everybody for their participation. With that, this meeting is adjourned.